Okay. Roll call the City Council for the meeting on Wednesday, April 17th, 2013, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones is here, presently not in the room, he'll be right out, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation.
We ask that we remember all of those that are less fortunate than we are in our community, both locally and globally. We also ask that we remember those that have lost loved ones since the last time that we've been in this chambers, and we ask our God and Father to give us wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Mr. President, I ask you to pray for the Nice family who lost their mother, 57 years old, to cancer. She was buried today.
Also, Mr. President, very quickly, I apologize, I did miss a very important person in our city and what we do, Mr. David Rocco, losing his father very recently, and so just want to remember that family and send our prayers and thoughts to them as well.
I'd also like to remember the victims, as we are all victims of the Boston incident. May we all pray for them, and at this time also. At this time, we have the ROTC from East High School presenting our colors today.
Order, arms. Post.
Right, face. Forward, march. Please stand. Please stand.
Let my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of April 3rd and for bills for payment on April 19th and April 26th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay. Next on the agenda is individuals who have requested to purchase property under...
Mr. Clem, I'd like to just announce a few guests we have here today with us, as well as the East ROTC. We do have some student nurses from Gannon University that are, did a study in our area downtown, and I know this was a last minute thing coming in front of council tonight, but they are here tonight to view their findings and present to council what they have learned as they have been in the downtown area regarding lighting during the night in Erie. But also, we have a junior council member with us tonight, Tavare Carr, which after our Gannon girls speak, we'll let you introduce yourself, let us know what school you go to, your family, and welcome. First, I'd like to welcome up the Gannon girls, if you would please. Rachel, Elena, and Devon, I believe, right?
So recently, Gannon did a $1.1 million lighting project to light from Third through Eighth Street and Peach to Chestnut, which did help make the streets more visible and walking at night for Gannon students more safe. However, directly off-campus, lighting is not as sufficient, and we feel that there is a need there and a lack of lighting. Devon drove around and marked all of the areas that are lit by Gannon, and then all of the areas one block off-campus, and some, there's about an average of 15 lights per block on campus, and some off-campus blocks only have as few as one street light. So we just wanted to bring that issue to the council tonight.
I don't know, it's hard to see on that because my paper's colored, but you can see what areas lit by GU. It's a little bit darker, it's a square. The areas around, we did this project originally because a lot of our students live off-campus, including myself, and we just don't feel safe. And when I was driving around counting the streetlights, I noticed a lot of things that the lights were blocked by trees, or they just weren't working, and that, and along with some crimes that I had witnessed in the past four years of being a student, just kind of concerned me for, you know, the rest of the school year and for future Gannon students. Elena and Rachel did some research, too, that they can present.
We looked up a lot of studies that were done, and the, most of them did show that adequate lighting decreased the crime rate in areas. And even if the area, even if there wasn't sufficient decrease in crime rate, the unwarranted fear in people decreased significantly, which I think is also a big thing. Even if there's not as much crime, just feeling safe in where you are is a big deal.
And then in eight major U.S. cities where they increased lighting, there was an overall decrease of 7% in the total crime rate. And they also found that in the four cities that had the most significant effects, that crime was decreased in the daytime as well as the nighttime.
So we just thought it was important that either lighting be increased directly off-campus, or if that was impossible, that the existing lights be maintained so that all of them were in working order, and that all trees and everything in the way wasn't blocking the lights anymore, just so students could be safe off-campus as well.
As well as Erie pedestrians.
Yeah.
I met with these girls yesterday, and of course, it was a little more relaxed conversation, and it wasn't a coffee shop, too, but their views is, you know, they take class late at night, and, you know, even though you're, you may only be walking a block, in the, at night, you know, you don't have to be a girl, you don't have to be a student, you don't have to be a child or anything, I mean, things, things can be nerve-wracking out there. I know Gannon improved their lighting in the area, which is a great asset, even though some of their dorms in there are off-campus, you still have a lot of Gannon students in the city as well as other citizens. I know you mentioned there are some streetlights out. There is a number on our channel access that gives us a phone number, which I did get that, 870-1396. So if you see a light out, feel free to call, or you can call Pennelect also, but that's the city number there, our traffic engineer's office. But I know this was a project you had to do, and it helps get you a grade and credits, which is good, and we appreciate your input, and all of us up here can learn and walk downtown at certain hours and see where you're coming from on this issue. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
Mr. President, I just had one question. The, looking at your map here, did you find a particular block that is the worst in terms of lighting that we could maybe try to address or have our folks look at?
Well, my particular area in concern was the fact that we still have academic buildings on Ninth Street, and there aren't any new lights put there, but I think the worst was Third Street and beyond, like to Front Street. There was like one per block on some and none because they weren't working on others.
Okay.
And I know a lot of students live down in that area.
Okay. That's a big, and the ones that you said these are not working at all, have you identified those locations so that the city can get those fixed, or could you? Could, or could you give us those locations, then we can get the, because that is something that we need people to report when the streetlights are out, because otherwise, then we don't enforce with Pennelect to replace those bulbs, and we pay for those even if they're not on, so we want them to be on. So that would be a huge help to us, since you've already done this, to say, you know, at this intersection, this one's out, and we can get those back on. Okay, thank you, that's a great project.
Mr. President, I say to you, as well as any citizens, the process for having a streetlight fixed is to call the city. That's first because, number one, the city is a customer of Pennelect, and they deal with their customers. So the best thing to do is call the city, the city has an agreement with Pennelect, and they will send someone out. To expedite that, if you can get the tag number off the pole that is with the lights out, that helps Pennelect identify it right away. So those are two things you need to remember. Thank you.
If there isn't a tag number on their, the address, the house address, that'll help, too, and that might help to get an A2 in this project, so.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you very much for your efforts, and thank you for coming down tonight. I think we're going to let our junior councilman say a few words, give a short bio of himself, and, you know, you got to stand up and let everybody see you.
Mr. President, if I could...
Sure.
I would like just to introduce our junior councilman for tonight. This is Tavare Carr, he's a junior at East High School, and he's a fine young man, he's in our East High School Gentlemen's Club, we're learning about responsibility, respect, becoming a young gentleman in society, and so I picked him tonight because I thought he was worthy of the position, and he expressed an interest in it, and so with that, Mr. Carr, you can tell a little bit about yourself.
I just wanted to thank our council for its opportunity, and so, it's an opportunity that I appreciate, because I kind of want to know a little bit about politics, because I don't know anything about politics at all, being honest, that's, it's an honor, thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Any questions from any council members?
No, thank you, nothing.
Yeah, get after it. Mr. Clem.
Okay. Let's move on to repository sales. First, we'll hear from Mrs. McCollum. Okay.
Hello there.
Hi. I'd like to purchase the property at 414 East Avenue to fix up and move in with my children. I have a 15-year-old son and a 12-year-old daughter.
No, it's not.
I don't think it's in there yet.
No.
What's the address again, ma'am?
414 East Avenue.
Ma'am, could you state your name again?
Isabelle McCollum.
Can you tell us about what you intend to do with the property?
I intend to try to get a loan to fix it up, because I went by there, and I looked at the property, and I intend to get a loan, fix it up, and move into it with me and my children, and bring it up to code.
And the, I know you're not really able to go inside, but you've taken a look at the property?
Mm-hmm. I went around the side, looked into the windows, and looked inside, and there's a lot of work need to be done to it, but with a little TLC, it can get done.
Okay. And the reason we made you come here is because we want to make sure that, because these are blighted properties, they're being, they're being, back taxes are being forgiven, we want to make sure that the person who's buying them is going to make them better, or going to remove the blight for the city, and in exchange for us relieving those back taxes and things like that, we have an expectation that the new owner will make that home a valued part of the neighborhood, so we appreciate that.
It's a very nice neighborhood. That's why I feel it's worth putting the money into it.
Right, very good, very good.
We apologize if some of us look lost up here, we, they did not, we did not get the memo on it or through the, our new little iPads here. Normally, we have a packet and shows the property and gives all the dimensions and everything, but we do appreciate you showing interest in investing in the city, and I don't know if anybody else has any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the next madam up for the repository sale, please? I think he has it there, but...
Hi, good evening, my name is Gary Curtis. I'm a local contractor here in Erie, Pennsylvania, and I'm looking at buying the property located 761 East 10th to renovate it and bring it back up to city codes. My plans are to have it done within a year and back on the tax market.
You want me to go?
You go after it.
Mr. Curtis, this property is single-family, duplex, what is...
Single-family.
Okay.
Two-story.
Okay, and you intend to renovate it and sell it, rent it out?
I'm going to rent it out. I've bought several properties from the tax, judicial tax sale in the past, and been successful with them, and hopefully I'll be successful with this one also.
Okay. 761 East 10th.
Any other council members?
Excuse me, Mr. President, you said 761?
Correct.
Is the address, what street?
It's on...
What's that between?
It's on Hampton Wayne.
Okay.
It'd be on the southeast corner.
Okay.
Okay, Mr., thank you, Mr. Curtis. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Good evening, my name is Sheila Woger, and I'm interested in the property on East 28th Street. I don't have the exact address, because I was told that you would have that information, so I didn't bring it with me. It is on East 28th Street. It's a one-and-a-half-story, one-family dwelling.
And ma'am, what do you intend to do with it?
I intend to bring it up to code and to make it my residence.
I see. And you have the economic wherewithal to do that, right?
Yes, sir, I do.
Good, sure, good for you.
That also is a single-family dwelling, is that what you mentioned?
Yes, it is.
And the condition of the property now, it's in bad shape, or what do you mean?
I can only see from the outside.
Right.
But it will need some work, I'm sure.
And you have some knowledge or somebody that can help you with that?
Yes, I do.
Good, excellent, great. Hopefully, we'll have all our paperwork in line for the next meeting, and you've provided all the things you need, so we'll make a vote on this in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I think we have one more gentleman for repository.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dave Bischoff, and I am interested in the property at 530 East 8th.
What was your last name again, sir?
Bischoff, B.I.S.H.O.F.F.
Thank you. Is this a single-family home, sir, or...
Yes, sir.
And what are your intentions with regard to this?
I would like to fix it up, move into it.
Oh, so you intend to live in it?
Yes, right now, I'm in an apartment, and I, I have no room for my grandkids to come up and stay with me, so, you know, I need something bigger.
And you have the economic wherewithal to be able to do this?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, sir. Mr. Clem will get all the paperwork in order, I'm sure, and...
Yeah, I'll call tomorrow morning, first thing, yeah.
We have another one.
We have one more? Okay. That's what we like, investors in the city.
My name is Ronald Palmer, I want to purchase the property on 2005 Brooklyn Avenue. I wanted to purchase the property on 2005 Brooklyn Avenue.
And your name, sir, again?
Ronald Palmer.
Thank you.
Could you describe the property for us, sir?
It's just a vacant lot. I've been upkeeping the property for the last three years, cutting the grass and stuff. I had a lot of rodents running around the area, and a lot of vandalizing running around in there, so I've been basically keeping that property clean, and I want to put a garden in that area.
Is this adjacent to property you own, sir? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council?
That's good, thank you. Mr. President, if we could just ask Mr. Clem to alert the Economic Development Office that we need that documentation before they come? I see we have one on the agenda for an actual vote, and we received that documentation in time for the vote, but we really need it in time for them to come and present to us.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Next up is citizens to be heard.
My name is McDonald, my property is 19th and Reed. You know, my heart goes out for those peoples up there in Boston. That was a tragedy, but I told you a long time ago that we'd be having that over here, those bombings and things, and evidently, I must have felt something or known something, because if anything can happen over, across the water, it can happen over here. We're bringing those peoples over here by the boatloads. I'm not, I'm not saying that somebody from over there did it, I don't care who did it. It was wrong, and they'll be dealt with it, but I say that to say this. We have three centers, and there haven't been anything done to those centers in years and years, at least 20 years, anyway, but you could find money for everywhere else. You're going to have some problems this summer, I believe, I really do. I know you think you're bulletproof, but you're not. You're not. Those kids, they need some help. You're in a position to give it to them. I see you got work going on out here. Every year or so, look like you're replacing that sidewalk out there, I don't know why, but you can't find no money for those centers. One of these days, you're going to wish you had, if you have to spend some of your own. And I, I'm not threatening you, I'm just telling you what's going to happen, because I, I don't know, some of you can't see no farther than your nose, but I can look forward, I can see the way things are going. You don't want to do nothing for our kids. Everything is, and, you know, these contractors come into town, and you got these here, you don't give those so-called minorities a job. When they come to town, you as supposed to be leaders should make sure that minorities get on those jobs, get a certain percentage of it. Now, we pay taxes, but we don't, we don't get no service, we don't get nothing. We, we don't get a thing. I guess you say, what's good for y'all is good for us, but what's good for y'all ain't always good for us. You're going to find that out one of these days, too. I used to wonder why those people was buying those AK-47s. It's very few bright folks can afford one of them guns. They're buying them to kill with them. They're not buying them for toys. What do you need with something like that? If you go hunting, and you hit a deer, you're going to tear him up. You won't be, find enough there to bring home. You better think about that. You better think about all those guns out there. I think we're going to have a pretty warm summer here. That's, that's too bad, because I know you could do better than you're doing. You could do something for those centers. I'm, I, I seem to be the only one that's saying something about it. Maybe only, I'm the only one to see that they need fixing up. You took the money from them and sent it to Martin over there, somebody over there was stealing. I haven't heard nobody going to jail. I don't know, but you all supposed to know. You all supposed to, you're supposed to be good stewards of our money, but you haven't been very good stewards. You haven't been very good. I don't know. I had two kids on my social security, and they took them off when they got 18. Hell, that's what I was working for, to try to help my kids. I want them to do better than me. I want them to do better than me. But them foreigners come over here, you're, you're so good to them, you don't even treat our old folks that kind of good. You building these houses, you giving them a garage, they got air conditioning. And I don't even have that in my house.
I don't either, but...
And I don't work like hell, I want you to know that, but...
Thank you.
And, and I'm not joking with you, I'm trying to tell you something, if you just halfway listen.
I'm, we listen, believe me, we do listen.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Sally Kohler, and I'm the coordinator of the Greater Coquelin Neighborhood Watch, and I do have a copy here of some of our 45-block captains from our Neighborhood Watch. I'm here tonight to talk about a strip bar by the name of Juliet's, formerly Hanky Pankys, that is located at the corner of Eighth and Shenley Drive. The address, I believe, is 2022 West 8th. As you know, this culminated in a shooting December 23rd, where a man was shot outside this club, but there's been a number of other things that have occurred that the police, and the police have been very cooperative when called, and some of the things that they've been called, therefore, are the following. If you can't hear me, please raise your hand. Assault, unwanted person harassment, burglary, theft, and weapons violations. Those are what the police have been called for. In addition, neighbors around there are very upset, and I had a long list, and I condensed the list to additional things that are going on there, that the neighbors are having to tolerate and do not want to tolerate in this nice neighborhood. Beer cans, bottles, broken glass, used condoms in the parking lot, the streets and the yards around there. Drug deals in the parking lot, half a dozen times. And these, of course, were reported to the police when seen. Constant noise, loud stereos, cars racing out of the parking lot onto both West A Street and Shenley Drive. Fights in the parking lot, this is also reported to the police. Weeds, uncut grass on the property. Open containers of alcohol leaving with people and drinking in parked cars outside the establishment. An unsafe atmosphere generally. Also, there are a number of children under 12 years of age living in the neighborhood. I have also brought for your information petitions that have been signed, about 120 names. And I have two sets of petitions here for you. About 120 people in the general neighborhood have signed these petitions requesting that you do something about this club. Also, the owner of the club is also the owner of the building. And for your information, the taxes have not been paid for the past two years. That's all three taxes, county, school, and city taxes. And the present taxes have not been paid unless they've been paid since last Thursday. So those are all things I'm asking you to take under consideration, but especially for what is going on and what has gone on, which the neighbors find intolerable. I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can, if you have any questions of me.
Ma'am, we'll read over the literature that you're presenting us today and follow up with either you personally or either any one of our council members here tonight, okay?
Thank you, I greatly appreciate it. My name, address, and phone number is on the material that I have presented to you. And thank you very much, and I hope you will give us a very deep consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask a question. Ms. Kohler, I apologize, I should have asked you when you were standing here, but it just dropped in my mind. That's my neighborhood, too. So my sons walk across A Street to Harding School. So it's very much besides just my position as a city council member. But here's my question. What is your actual request for... from us? Just to look further into... I understand the tax situation, but what are you asking for us? Just better monitoring? You know what I mean? A tighter watch on the location? You know what I mean? Something specific? Right, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other citizens to be heard tonight? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Mr. Clem.
Okay, a resolution sponsored by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, appointing Stephen Flamio, 3525 Roma Drive, Erie, to the Erie Blighted Property and Maintenance and Rental Licensing Appeals Board for a term of two years expiring on April 17, 2015. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Next, we have a resolution by Mr. Mursky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that the mayor and city controller are hereby authorized to execute a sidewalk maintenance agreement between the city of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the West 38th Street Bridge over I-79, which will be rebuilt possibly this year. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Mr. President, I move the balance of the agenda.
Sounds good.
Any separations?
Number two on the contracts.
There you go. Any other ones?
Okay, voting...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Except for number two under contracts, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Next, then, we have a resolution by Mr. Mursky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, proper city officials are hereby authorized, directed, and entered into a contract between the city of Erie and JFK Center, Erie, for the summer recreation program, spoons, courts, summer basketball, in the amount of $18,000. Discussion?
Mr. President, just a simple note that I abstain from voting on this issue. I serve on the board of JFK and I'm the spoon. Is that a wooden spoon? Silver spoon?
Was there any question about that?
Mr. Spoons before you. How many years have you been doing this?
This is 23rd year.
The city's been there for you, too? As you for the city?
Yes, sir. Excellent.
It is the JFK Center, so they are getting some funds from the city for 23 years now, supporting this basketball program. And it is a good program, if I recall.
Yes, it is. We have a lot of young men, a lot of young women. We have them five days a week, starting at 5:00. And we usually, in the last game, around 9:30. We get out of there about 10:30 after cleanup and we go again.
How long does it go on?
It'll be two months.
That's a two-month program, beautiful.
Councilman Witherspoon, the signups for your program, I recall last year were in the pamphlet and by the time we got the pamphlet, it was past the dates of the signing up. Are we going to get a sign-up notice ahead of time?
Yes, we have a website that's coming out, thanks to Penn State Baron. They'll be able to sign up online. And also, because it's the first year, I will continue to hand out the hard copies at the YMCA, the Housing Authority, the three neighborhood centers, and the Hispanic American Council. So we'll still do that. Next year, we hope to go totally electronic.
Very good.
I'll make sure that council have ample copies to hand them out.
And electronic.
Especially to schools.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clem.
Okay. Voting, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon abstains. That takes us to committee reports. Mr. President.
Thank you. Before we go to committee reports, I just want to congratulate a new member of our council meetings here tonight, Ms. Beck. She is the new mayoral assistant in the administration. And speaking on behalf of council, we look forward to working with you. We know you know some of the ropes and you know you have some to learn, but we look forward to a positive and productive relationship. Welcome. Ms. Kunko.
Kunko, Mr. Winarsky. Thank you. Okay, I just have one very quick report. I would also just like to mention for our junior council member, when we were going over the items on the agenda and we said we're passing the balance, that means we voted yes to everything. So we didn't have to go one by one by one through because we were agreeing with everything on the agenda. So that's what that meant. So just wanted to let everybody know, just real quick. I had the privilege of going to Harrisburg on Monday for the Erie Area COG, which I talk about a lot here, the council of governments. The council of governments was given an award, a governor's award for excellence in IT. And what they were doing was it was Local Government Week and the governor was recognizing initiatives amongst the municipalities in Pennsylvania to try to do collaborative efforts and things that they are doing together. And our COG was recognized for its efforts in e-government and particularly what we're working on with our SharePoint, which we are using in our council meetings. And also the assistance they're doing with broadband outreach to help the outside, outlying areas outside of the city to make sure that they have broadband access and also websites and things like that. So it was really an honor to get to go to Harrisburg with the Erie Area COG and the e-government group that we have, both a public-private partnership on that committee. We have VelocityNet represented on the committee with Joel Deuterman. And we have a number of different highly skilled folks here that know a lot about technology that are helping us. We have Alan Millett, who's working as our circuit rider, who's teaching people how to use these types of devices in our SharePoint sites. And Mr. Ed Lesser, of course, is the administrator of the COG. And we also invited to share with us in the award the Erie County Gaming Authority because they have also awarded the COG with about $155,000 grant to continue the program and to continue to grow in the area of e-government. So we were able to share with them the award as well. And we just had a nice group of folks attend. And Mr. Dave Henderson from Franklin Township, who works very hard as the chair of the eGov Committee, was able to be there. So anyway, so it was nice for Erie Area COG to get noticed. And we had the opportunity to meet with DCED while we were there. And also, they are meeting with borough associations and different groups to talk with them about the opportunity to collaborate electronically. And DCED was very impressed with what we're trying to do here in Erie. So we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kunko. Mr. Mursky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. First, we voted on the agenda tonight for the St. Vincent Health Center renewal for their payment in lieu of taxes. I just wanted to thank the administration and all the city officials who worked out that agreement. And thank St. Vincent Health Center for their contribution to the city under the same terms as the previous agreement. So it's a five-year deal for 50% of their tax payment. And so we are thankful for them. And we need more nonprofits to step up. And we're thankful for St. Vincent for being a good model of nonprofit contribution to the city. So thank you to them and thank you to you for your hard work. Just a couple other things. Dog licenses are available in the treasurer's office and at various points around the city. I know the state officials are in checking for those dog licenses. So if your animal does not have a license, please stop and get one. The fine is quite hefty, in the hundreds of dollars, $300. And that's well worth the $15 to $20... Is it how much, 15? $15? Six, only $6 to tag your animal. So for $6 for the license is much cheaper than the $300 fine. So please stop down and get your license. Ms. Beck, I like you sitting there because you're feeding me all this information. And finally, the street sweepers are out and the patching and repair is going on. Please be patient with the city. I am getting your emails and phone calls, as I'm sure other council people are. We are submitting those to the Streets Department to get those patched. And as soon as they get to them, they will. And last thing, United Way Day of Caring is this weekend. So please, if you have a chance to volunteer in the community for United Way, that's this weekend at various points. If you have any questions, you can call the United Way at 456-2937. 456-2937. If you need a place to volunteer, they can point you in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mursky. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's easy to say my name, huh? It's just Jones. I'm not a Jonas brother or anything, right? Yeah, it's pretty simple. Thank you again. By way of report, just wanted to give some community information out. The Multicultural Resource Center, obviously located, their headquarters on East 10th Street, does a lot of great community work with our international residents in the community, Hispanic community, and other individuals who are new American citizens here in the city of Erie or new American members of our community. They also have, for lack of a better term, a satellite location in the John Heran Gardens on Tacoma Road. And I regrettably left my packet of information, so I will report in more detail next week and also leave information here in the clerk's office on the plethora of programs that they have for individuals who are living in the Housing Authority properties, not just in the gardens there on Tacoma Road, but throughout any of the Erie Housing Authority housing units. I mean, from the range of GED classes in English as a Second Language classes to fiscal management classes, there's so many, an array of programs available for those who need a diversity of those types of programs. Again, we'll bring in more detail and have copies of some of their brochures here in the clerk's office for anyone who is interested in utilizing those services. Next, you know, we were talking about, we had several people here this evening about repository sales. And a few years ago, we came up with a process that we asked people to come, talk to us a little bit about what their endeavor is going to be, what they're going to do with it, what, you know, how they're going to work it, whether they're going to live in it or they're going to just rent it out. We put some fail safes in, so we thought, to try to make sure that we can get some of these properties off the blighted list. And I think there's been a moderate amount of success in that. And I just wanted, what kind of sparked this this evening? Mr. Evans asked a question that ever since I've been on council, no one else has asked that I can remember, and I have a pretty good memory about this kind of stuff. And you asked a question about fiscal ability. Are you fiscally able to do what your dream in your heart is presenting to us today? And to be perfectly honest, because I try to be that as much as possible, I was like, well, why are you going to ask that question? You know, I never heard anybody ask that question. Especially, this is African-American woman over here, you asking this question? You know, all those crazy thoughts go through your head for a moment. But knowing the gentleman that asked the question, I knew it was legitimate. And I just kind of said, well, you know, we never asked that before. And then I started thinking, why haven't we asked that question before? Because we have great ideas and great visions and things we want to do, but he brought to our attention again in our caucus session about the issue of blighted property. And it's great to think that we're getting a lot of blighted properties off the list through this repository sale process, but I would be interested to find out how many are recycled back through. Because people have great ideas, a great ambition, but maybe don't have the best-laid plan and don't really know what it's going to take to fulfill that vision and make it a reality. And I said all that to say, you know, maybe it's time for us to relook at how we interface with the community on dealing with these repository sales as we continue to have that discussion about tax lien sale properties and having a local representative here so that we can interact with them. I know it's a county issue, but it's a city issue. We're all in the same county, so it makes sense for us to dialogue about that. And so I would be interested in just kind of sitting down, I'll talk to the Redevelopment Authority, Kim Green, and say, maybe we need to tighten this up a little bit. We did some good things, maybe it's time to upgrade. Because there's some legitimate questions. And we'll do some research and find out what the recidivism rate, I'll use that term for this, but if these properties are coming back in because people have great ideas but don't have the fiscal ability and the wherewithal to make them reality. So I guess I'll say thank you to Mr. Evans because you kind of lit, you did a light bulb in my head by first me being sensitive to something that wasn't real.
My pleasure.
Yes, sir. Finally, I, hopefully on the SharePoint, we'll be getting it soon, if it's not on there already. I have an idea that I want to share with council, and I'm just going to throw it out here softly, kind of a soft pitch, to see what some response would be. We, all of us on this council, all of us who are in this room, I'm sure, are concerned about our community in so many different ways and so many different levels. And I'll wrap up in 30 seconds, real quick. What I'd like to introduce is a concept of a city council, and I don't have a name for it, it's not that formal, we're still working on the details. But city council taking a leadership role and utilizing a portion of our budget that we often don't use and kind of turning it over into the next year's budget to... we often don't use, and kind of turning it over into the next year's budget, to be an igniter of a youth summer work program that will allow us to partner with other gifting and other giving organizations in the city and in the region, to put a number of young people to work. And this is our, taking a leadership, tangible leadership role, in working to deal with some of the challenges in our community, and helping to invest in our most valuable asset, which is our young people in our community. And so, again, I'm way over my time, I apologize, thank you for your grace, but there should be a quick narrative on our SharePoint by tomorrow. And so, please, I'm open to making this a reality, and I know it takes us working together to do that. And I've been in touch with several people in the community that would definitely see this as a benefit. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. It sounds like you have a pretty good idea there. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to generally inform council that I continue to receive calls regarding situations and incidents at Twenty-First and Ass Street. I've called the chief's office, he's been in and out, and that's normal, but Donna did get back to me, chief's aware of it, and he'll probably get back to me tomorrow. And I just need to know if we're doing something. Sometimes you want something to happen right away when we are observing. So just let the folks know who continue to call that something is being done, we just have to be a little patient, and I'll get back to you. Ugly thing has risen again, that's the wall up at the Parade Street developers, or development on, and I read this incorrectly earlier, it's East Nineteenth and German Streets, and the driveway of Nickel Plate is in violation of section of the ordinance. They don't identify which one, which comes out of our zoning office. So I plan to go by again tomorrow and check it out myself, to ensure that there is a violation, maybe in writing, but what else is in violation. So we're gonna check that out, and I'll report online to council my findings. Also, the situation with tettering is still alive and well. Councilman Brennan plans to check on a couple of cities, to see what they have done with their tettering laws, how they make it work, if it's working at all. Harrisburg is dealing with the same issue. The Harrisburg politicians are reviewing law currently, we aren't sure if they're gonna pass it or not. So until we get some concrete information, my main concern is enforcement. We have a person that's dealing with the entire city, and that's my main concern. So I think the findings that we'll get will help us make a sound decision. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a couple meetings and a couple events. The Erie Downtown Partnership had a press conference this past, last Wednesday, because they're applying for funding for a, to update their existing, the existing downtown master plan. At the meeting, the partnership answered questions about the community planning needs, about what timing of the work that's gonna take place, and some of the details. And I'll definitely continue to monitor this initiative to update the plan. I attended a press conference last Friday to highlight the threat of the Asian carp threat to the Great Lakes. Speakers included, it was actually sponsored by Environment Erie. Speakers included Amy Jo Smith of Environment Erie, a Great Lakes biologist, Senator Casey's office, and myself representing the city. I sponsored, back on October third, I sponsored the resolution to protect the Great Lakes from this Asian carp threat, and I really hope that measures will be taken to make sure this doesn't occur, because, you know, definitely our economy depends on the Great Lakes, and definitely the city, it's a great asset to have the lake right in our front yard here. I attended the Destination Erie's, as a member of the committee, I attended Destination Erie's Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting today. We have a very good meeting, I think we're definitely getting somewhere. There's two events that are coming up that I wanted to inform you about. There's a lecture that's sponsored by Destination Erie coming up, it's called the Destination Erie: A Regional Vision Charting the Course of the Bayfront. It's a public lecture, it's free, it's gonna be at the Blasco Library in the Hurd Auditorium. It's on April twenty-third, and it's from seven to nine o'clock, seven to nine P.M. Representative from Wallace, Roberts, and Todd, one of the country's leading planning firms, will be giving the lecture. They are also working as a consultant on the Destination Erie Plan, and the talk will be followed by a Q and A session to answer questions from anyone who attends. And there's also four Destination Erie Public Workshop meetings coming up. I do have handouts, which I'll put in the clerk's office for anyone who would need one, they can come and grab one. And it's also, there's some information online on their website. But there's gonna be a meeting in Gerard and Waterford on May seventh, in Lawrence Park, and in Erie on May eighth. And the meeting in Erie on May eighth is from seven to nine at the Avalon Hotel. And I'll definitely be hearing some more about that and keeping everybody up to date. And lastly, I did want to mention, I attended the Erie Rugby Club, had a game against Kalamazoo this past Saturday, at the Boys and Girls Club Field. And again, it was very important, because this was a Division III semifinal game, the Midwest Rugby Union, which represented a chance for Erie to play in a national championship. They were, unfortunately, they lost the game, but it was definitely a hard-fought game. And what many people don't know is, they've really been around since nineteen seventy-three, and it's a great group of individuals that are representing Erie, and hopefully we'll do it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to go back to one thing that Curtis said. One of the things that the Blighted Property Review Committee has asked the code enforcement people that they might do when people are approaching them to consider a repository sale request, is to give the folks that are approaching them a better understanding of what code violations are in place, and a suggestion that they get a contractor to at least give them an estimate for what the cost would be to remedy the code violations. Because I don't think we do anybody any favors to agree to a repository sale when they have no clue as to what it's gonna cost to bring the property up to code. Because if they only get halfway through, and then they, it falls apart because they don't have the money to take it to closure, everybody loses in that deal. The city loses, because we've got a piece of property now on the tax rolls for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, you know, that's, that's not what we wanted, and we've forgiven past taxes in order to get to that point. The individual who took over the property loses, because they might have sunk ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars of their money in it, and they're not gonna be able to finish it. So I really think that it's, it's not an obstacle to the person trying to take over the repository, it's really doing them a favor, I think, of giving them the information they need to make a judgment. Two of the folks that came here tonight said they hadn't been inside the properties.
They're not allowed. They're not allowed.
Well, but they didn't have any photographs of it, or whatever. In many cases, we have photographs of the inside of the property that are taken by the code enforcement people, so they could get access to the photographs. So I just, I don't believe that we ought to wreck any barriers, I'm just trying to make sure that people go into it with their eyes open. And by the way, I asked more than just that one woman, just in case there was any question about that. The other thing about the blighted property process is that's driven by the funding that comes from the Community Development Block Grant Program, and as I pointed out in previous meetings, that funding has been in a downward spiral since two thousand and four. In two thousand and four, we got about four point three million, we're down to less than two point seven million, and the Redevelopment Authority, which carries out the blighted property work, only gets a portion of that money. So, you know, we have to come up with other mechanisms to deal with urban blight than relying on government funding from the federal and state governments, because that's going away. So we're gonna have to just get creative about that. There's some land bank solutions that we're gonna start to talk about, and with the city, the county, other municipalities. So it'll take a regional effort to make a land bank work, but I think that that's a very promising alternative, so that we can deal with blight. You know, the Mill Creek Township's now trying to put in a blight remediation program, they've never had one, they've not even had codes relative to blight. And so they're, they're starting to copy what we've done in the city for a long time, and I think that's just another example, as Jessica was talking about, the cog. I mean, we're starting to see a number of intergovernmental cooperation issues that are really raising, you know, the bar to a new level. And that's, that's pretty exciting, I think. I just wanted to mention in passing, the Perry Two Hundred Celebration is starting to really gear up, and there's a week, starting next Monday, the twenty-ninth, is next Monday? No, next Monday's the twenty-second, be week after, the twenty-ninth, where there are a number of events at the Jefferson Society that are free. So I would encourage people to contact the Jefferson Society and find out what events are free, because they're starting to bring in some great speakers and great programs, and most of them are no cost to participate. So that's a, that's a great thing, the Jefferson Society's on Upper State, and it's just a great program, and good Lord, if we can see lots of great speakers and programs at no cost, I think that's a real plus for the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Just a few comments. I know periodically we do meet with the police chief, and I think it's that periodic time that we should probably do that. If I would ask Mr. Witherspoon if we could possibly do that after our next meeting. I'm sure there's a few questions, and from what we've gotten from the public, as well as other issues, that as a council, we probably would like to hear some answers to. Just want to thank our youth that came out tonight to join us, East ROTC, the young ladies from Gannon, as well as our junior council member. It was a pleasure having you, it was a pleasure having the youth be involved and interested on what we do here. Sometimes it can be boring, but we appreciate the interest, and thanks for coming out tonight. Just want to give Mr. Spoons a congrats, twenty-third year of Spoons Basketball. He's not doing it for him, he's doing it for the youth, he's doing it for the city. So people gotta remember that. Thank you. Mr. Jones was there the first year, too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Junior Councilman, any comments at all? Since Cav's isn't here.
No comments, just thank you again, and I kind of have an idea of what I do now.
Thanks, can you tell us? You have no idea. Can you let us know?
Just a little bit, not completely.
I didn't get it yet. Thank you, sir. Ms. Beck.
Just want to say thank you, everyone, for being so welcoming this evening. I do look forward to working with all, everyone on council. Following up on Mr. Evans' comments about Perry Two Hundred, it does kick off the week of the twenty-eighth at Jefferson Educational Society. I attended a press conference yesterday, a Lampley Press Conference, that detailed all the events that are happening, and many of them are free. Sons of Lake Erie are sponsoring a summer-long fishing competition. Of course, we have the Grand Patriotic Parade that will be happening on May twenty-fifth. Perry Birthday Party in Perry Square, Oliver Hazard Birthday Party coming up in August. Tall Ships in September, and wrapping everything up with a grand finale at Liberty Park. So lots of great things to do this summer, family-friendly activities, and as Mr. Evans said, it's free, and many of them are free and open to the public, so no reason to say that there's nothing to do. But thank you again, I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard again. Mr. Clem.
The council now adjourned at eight forty P.M. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rankunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Witherspoon.